All right, welcome everybody to the Development Review Committee meeting of May 23rd Tuesday. We are here, we have one item on our agenda today and that's the proposed Commons Lane project, which is for the Commons next door, who shows the applicant. And we have Tatiana here from Public Works and Jacqueline Rattrby from the Planning Department and myself, I'm Glenn Mickich. And just give a little spiel about the Development Review Committee that we give every time and that is that this is a technical advisory meeting. When we get a project submitted, we look for quite a few technical issues and this is our opportunity to meet with the applicant to talk about what we've seen so far in our review. And we communicate those items with them and ask them some questions and they'll ask us questions and hopefully we'll know all the, all the little details that we need to take a closer look at and issues that we need to resolve as we go through this process. These meetings are available to the public for it to attend and we will reserve a space at the end of this meeting for commentary by the public. Based off of what they've heard and seen. And so we will get to you guys soon enough. Um, but as for right now, I think we can go ahead and start the meeting, I'm going to invite in Chris Robertson for as the applicant, I'm going to promote you to be a panelist. And I think she's going to be in here in a second, there she is. Chris, can you, can you hear us and can you speak to us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
You can hear you as well.
Okay, great.
I thought a good start to this would be if you had a few minutes, maybe you could just kind of do a brief explanation of your project, a little presentation. So that the public's aware of what we're doing here and then we can get into some issue.
Yeah, I would love to, thank you Glenn. So again, for the record, my name's Chris Robertson, I'm Vice President of Planning Government and Community Relations for Caruso. And we're very excited to be here today with the city to discuss our plans for the future. The Commons at Calabasas is a very special property for us and an incredibly unique community. As you know, we opened our doors at the Commons 25 years ago, just seven years after the city incorporated. And back then, we set out to create a gathering place that met the community's needs and captured its special spirit and character. We've been absolutely delighted by the way Calabasas has embraced the Commons over the years, making it the community's de facto town square and we want to thank the community for making the Commons what it is today. That being said, the world has changed quite a bit since we opened in 1998. The way that we live, the way shop, the way we enjoy entertainment is all evolved. And we want to make sure that the Commons keeps pace with the times and continues to grow and thrive with the community. So the plan we've submitted to the city is designed to help the Commons do just that for the next 25 years and really beyond. We call it the Commons Lane and it's a reimagining of the Commons to include beautiful new destinations for shopping, dining, living, and just spending time together. I just want to spend a few minutes touching on the process that led us to the evolution of the plan. Just as we always do at Caruso, we started by listening. So for more than a year and a half, we've been leading a very extensive community engagement process. That's included large community meetings, visioning sessions, virtual and in-person meetings, one-on-ones, coffees and more. We asked the community what they liked best about the Commons today and how they'd like to see it evolve for the future. So what did we hear? We heard that the Commons is deeply valued in Calabasas, it's considered the community's town center and a great place to enjoy a meal with friends, to celebrate special moments like graduations, birthdays and anniversaries, or just run errands and grab a cup of coffee. We also heard that it's the right time for changes and enhancements. Residents generally agree that the world has changed over the past 25 years and the Commons needs to involve to evolve to ensure it stays vibrant. So some of the ideas that we heard and we talked about included more restaurants with a variety of cuisines, more shops and more activities for the community, especially people of all ages. We talked a lot about the fact that the way we consume entertainment has changed. Calabasas residents recognize that the entertainment industry has been transformed by the rise of in-home entertainment streaming. And keeping the Commons vibrant for the future requires introducing new uses for the existing theater space. We heard that elegant housing done the right way can meet important needs. We met residents of all ages that were really interested and excited about the possibility of living at the Commons, including recent college graduates looking to return to the community from school, young families and seniors looking to downsize and remain in the community. And we also heard that apartment homes should be elegant and luxurious, a true alternative to single-family living in Calabasas. We also heard a lot from the community about more open space, introducing more green space for the community to relax in, read, and then have pop-up events like movies in the park or wine tasting or different ways to celebrate the holidays like we do at some of our other properties. And just adding more opportunities to walk and enjoy the beautiful Commons surrounded by lush landscaping. And of course, we talked a lot about parking. Convenient parking is very important to the community. Particularly access to surface parking when the community is visiting shops and restaurants. And so introducing new uses like residential should not impede access to the surface parking used by the community when visiting shops and restaurants. So our plan, which again, we're calling the Commons Lane and the plan that we submitted to you in the beginning of the month delivers a charming new village area within the Commons that includes new shops, new restaurants, ample room for outdoor seating, white sidewalks, lots of trees and a new family green space, family-friendly green space with lots of landscaping. And it also adds beautiful new apartment homes to the Commons for the first time. Glenn, I have a few slides that I can share in the event that the community is watching and would like to see them. So I will pull those up.
Be in the panel.
If I can figure out how to do this. Okay. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let's see if I can change the slide. Okay. So this is a view just off of Commons Way, a portion of the center west of Commons Way will be transformed into a beautiful new area. So we have about eight to 10 new shops and three to five new restaurants, including lots of space for outdoor dining, which you can see on the slide. And then we also have, you know, beautiful Mandarin Paseos, lots of wide sidewalks with lush landscaping to add a lot of visual interest. This is really meant to create sort of a new Main Street and it's orchestrated again around this main, this open space meant to sort of activate both sides of the street. It was largely inspired by what we were able to accomplish at Palisades Village, which is one of our more recent projects, which the community really liked. And then this slide just sort of gives you an idea of what the new area would be like from within the park. So you see a restaurant on the right here. There would be another restaurant to the left, just sort of out of frame, looking out over the park towards Polachek's in the background. And you can see it's just meant to be a space inspired by the community, for the community, for people to enjoy recreationally, or we can program it, you see some live entertainment inspiration images here and just a really fun way to activate the Commons and sort of give back to the community. And then across the street, the new Main Street will be the new residential building and that'll include 101 luxury apartment homes with amenity space, including a rooftop pool and a new boutique on the ground floor. And there will also be 18 apartment homes over the new shops and restaurants across the street. So for a total of no more than 119 apartment homes in all. As you see, the plan does involve closing the movie theater. A movie theater made a lot of sense when we opened back in 1998 before the advent of streaming services, but like I mentioned, there is widespread understanding that the way we consume entertainment has evolved over the last 25 years. And as we look towards the future, a movie theater at the Commons is really no longer sustainable use. So at the right time, we need to be ready to bring in new uses that will strengthen the Commons for the future. It's important to stress, this isn't a plan, you know, for tomorrow or even next year. It's a plan for the future and the open space area here again provides a really fun opportunity to enjoy movies in the park. So this slide is sort of the flip view hovering above where the existing marquee currently would be. And you can see instead of the theater, we're introducing elegant new apartment homes designed specifically for Calabasas, nestled between the ground floor shops and the hillside in the back where the movie theater currently sits. And you can see here how substantially set back the residential building is from the ground floor shops and restaurants in addition to nearby streets. So the new housing will help Calabasas thoughtfully meet its local housing goals. And as I mentioned, we've heard a lot of excitement from residents about the ability to move to the Commons and live here. And as you know, the housing will also help Calabasas meet the requirements of its housing element approved by City Council. I just want to take a moment to note, the housing element did identify about 200 units for the Commons and the zoning allows for a much more buy-right housing, but it was really important to us to make sure that this was the right size for the Commons. So that's why we are proposing a little more than half of what the city identified for the Commons previously. And another important note to stress, the new residential homes will have dedicated parking areas located underneath both buildings so that the parking or the residential uses are not impeding on the surface parking that's reserved for the community visiting shops and restaurants. One more slide here, so this is showing the other side of the Commons, this is Ralph's on the left, so just offset a little bit. There is nothing proposed in our plan right now for the side of the center, we just wanted to illustrate this, showing how the new building would interact with the center. Again, it's around 25 acres, so lots of room, lots of lush landscaping, a large surface parking lot. But one of the, one of the benefits is the building will partially screen the existing retaining wall. Oops. So we are very, very excited about this plan, a lot of efforts gone into designing it and taking into account the tremendous feedback we've heard from the community over the last year and a half. This is a rendered site plan on screen that shows the new area we're adding just on the other side of Commons Way. So one thing we just want to stress is the plan really involves a very, very small portion of the Commons. The only new area we're adding is here, everything else is within the currently developed area. Most of the Commons will remain the same. It's really, our plan is really meant to preserve the best of the Commons, protect everything that the community holds dear while making the future even better. And for anyone in the community that may be listening, who we haven't had a chance to engage with, we did launch a website for our plan last, went last Friday, it's the commenslane.com. So we'd welcome you to visit us there to learn more about the plan, the community outreach we've done. You can also contact us through the website and you're also welcome to reach out to me or my colleague Blake Cottington directly. Our email addresses are there on the screen for you. So I will, at this point, stop talking. And look forward to the discussion.
All right, thank you, Chris. Just a couple of things and probably for the benefit of the group too, I think you'd mentioned 119 was the unit count that's being proposed, correct?
Correct.
And 12 of those units are going to be affordable to low income, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so and that would make your project eligible for the state's density bonus law, so I think that's an important point for people to understand. And then for our own understanding as well, I just want to verify you're demolishing about 33,000, a little, little north of their square feet for that theater. But then you're going to rebuild 24,000, a little, little north of there new. So you're gonna have a net reduction in commercial space, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think that's important to get out there. Let's see, the best way, Tatiana, you want to go first? In case you need to leave earlier or?
I'd appreciate that, that would be nice. Chris, I don't have too many comments on this point, we're just a list of the submissions that are required. Will be required such as traffic study, water and sewer study, hydrology, report, stormwater treatment methods and sizing report and geotechnical report. And a few comments that I have are on the vesting tentative tract map. And I'll, I'll just, I'll just read them, it's just three comments right now. Plot all existing and proposed easement on the vesting tentative map and on the conceptual grading and drainage plan. And those easements are shown on, on the Schedule B exception from the title report, so those need to be plotted and shown. Please identify number of residential condos on the, on the vesting tentative map. And plot the FEMA floodplain also.
Thank you, Tatiana. Just one point of clarification on the vesting map, the residential will actually be for rent. So their airspace, residential airspace lots, but they will not be condominiums.
Just correct the note.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Tatiana. So and I'll take this point to mention that it does get, our notice does get routed through many different agencies. We've not heard back from any other agency, so most important there would be the fire department. I believe in our discussions, you've said you've already had a chance to at least sit down with the fire department to discuss certain issues. And be nice if, if we would get something from them eventually about what their comments are. In particular interest, probably the fire lane and back.
Absolutely.
Figured to see where they are on that issue in terms of width and, and their requirements. And then the, the water district, we don't hear from too often, but usually they just are concerned about their metering and, and the will serve letters and making sure your water supply is good enough, which it, it should be, it should be beyond that. And so with that, I think we can dive into some of our issues and I think I'm going to share a screen because although there are many technical issues and a lot of information for informationally on the plans that we're going to look for and ask you for, we don't need to take the time to go through all those, so we're going to stick to some of the ma- major items today. And which we only have a small handful of those, so let me share my screen and I'm going to take you to the, the rear portion and the public should be able to see this as well, so they can get an idea, so. Here's the center as it exists today. And we are talking about this portion of the center over here, as you pointed out on your diagram too. One thing that we are concerned about is the interaction between the kind of western portion of your building and the city hall of public, our state of public library really. And I hope everyone can see that. And I apologize with how big the file is. There's a delay and when I zoom in and when it does it, so it's kind of hard to toggle back and forth, but I'm currently where the western portion of your building is, is some parking spaces, I think you've estimated them to be about 10 spaces, although they're not striped out in the field. And you're proposing to relocate those spaces to the south on the city hall property. And currently right now, in that area where you're proposing these parking spaces is our Founder's Hall. And that's a rentable space that we have, part of our library building. And that back area right now is a series of terrace planters and an overhanging outdoor event space that is utilized by many in terms of some programming for, for the library and the senior center. And then those that rent the facility have a nice outdoor area to kind of enjoy with, with that kind of landscape element and it was purposely designed that way with that terrace planter area, so this current configuration is it's not ideal for that space, I'm not sure if, if that's something the city would entertain in terms of, of, of taking out that view and, and having a retaining wall, I think right now the retaining wall is about five feet high with proposed for that space right now. And this may have to be an ongoing conversation. But I want us to do a little bit more study work on this particular area. And I have a few things that I also want to mention in terms of that area. Because where the existing parking is right now, let me scroll back to that sheet. You can see this part that says the existing library parking, the tent stalls. I know this space on the end is a loading space for the library. And their path is from that loading space down a narrow corridor and a ramp down through the rear of the building. And inside the city hall there, so in our discussions as we move forward, we need to figure out how we're going to get a loading area that functions in that space. And a clear path to travel for those that need to load in their goods and services there. Jacqueline, I think's pulling up the aerial of that site right now.
Yeah, do you want me to share my screen?
Yeah, I think you can override this one, right?
Yeah. Okay, can we see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the area that Glenn was just talking about, you can kind of see it behind the trees right here, but let's see. These little archways lead into that covered patio that he was just talking about, so that's what would be blocked.
If I can just make a comment. We had the privilege of using Founder's Hall in the beginning of May to host a series of community meetings where we unveiled our plan. And now we're much more familiar with the area, so we will not be, we will not be amending that area, we'll definitely work with the city to figure out a solution to parking there, but I think that concept was developed before we understood how the topography worked there, so we understand it's, you know, it's a great area for the community and, and we, we would want to protect that.
Jacqueline, while we're on this, this aerial, now we were talking earlier today too, even just about this and we know you have a space, you see a little bulb out where the fire lane is, I know there's some utilities in that area, some transformers, some drainage facilities. Is there any possibility that any of that area can be utilized for some parking?
We're happy to take a look at it, I know there, there, there is, there are quite a few utilities in that area. But yeah, we'll, we'll for sure take a look at that.
I'm trying to see. Got a couple of things under the trees there.
Yeah, and, and one of the, one of the reasons that we mentioned there is just because it's already relatively flat. You know, so it might not be too much grading that had to happen, I know you're looking at ways to reroute your utilities, I'm not sure how far into that you've gotten so far, but there's quite a few that kind of run from, from that area down through the Commons, I think the, the city hall even has an electrical line that feeds from that transformer down into near the street there, out by Civic Center Way. But maybe that's all part of a plan to reroute those utilities. The other space that we are looking at, Jacqueline, maybe you can pan a little bit further to the west there. And this would be on the city's property and it's an area that we've looked at in the past before. And for one reason or not, we decided against putting parking in there, but that slope, it is relatively steep, so to get in, head in parking, you're probably looking at a 12-foot high plus retaining wall in that location, so I mean, there would be a cost to that, but there is some space over there, it looks pretty proximate to that area and there might be some opportunities there as well.
We're taking notes.
Okay. Just wanted to know if you had a reaction to that, but anyway, those are our thoughts. For loading, I would, I would say the loading space should still be proximate to that ramp somehow, and there might be a little bit of wiggle room on the, the loss to southern parking spaces that maybe we can keep. Right? If you, if, if we were to find another spot for parking, maybe we can keep the, at least the loading space, if anything back there with, and I believe the plan's already had access between that area preserved, right, for the, the library and loading and access path over there.
Yeah, I think it would be great if we can sit down and go over the easements, because there, there are some easements we have currently with the city. And probably some easements that the city will need from us and vice versa, so we can roll up our sleeves and kind of brainstorm what solutions might make sense.
Okay. Another quick question before we move on to the next topic, and I know you, you guys had put a couple ADA spaces back there, was there a requirement that you're aware of, why are those, would need to be ADA spaces back in that area? And then we didn't see a path to travel for them and we weren't quite sure what they were servicing.
Yeah, I'd have to check with our design team on the specific locations of the ADA.
Okay. Then we will follow that up. All right. So.
Do you want me to stop sharing?
Yeah, why don't you stop sharing, then we can pan in on other plans here. Think I have to go back in here again, there we go. Okay. Next on my list, I have the parking levels, I just had a couple of things to point out on the parking levels. And let me get to those sheets. Okay, now you have some reduced dimensions for your widths and I believe a concession that you were applying for as part of the affordable component was to reduce the widths of those parking spaces. And that, that's, that, that's okay. I did have a question, why eight foot six? Because you have nine, is that just, just spatial requirements? You're running out of space in there, I mean, that's technically a compact space.
It's, yeah, it's, it's space requirements. And just want to stress that this would only be for the parking underneath the residential. It would not be reduced spaces for the surface parking lot.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Or reduced size, reduced size, sorry. We have a, we have a surplus of parking.
Spaces. Now, in our code for double-loaded aisles, the parking aisle dimension minimum is 24 feet, which you have more than enough room, you have 25 and a half. But you had a depth of 18 feet for double-loaded aisles, it's supposed to be 20 feet. Is that something that you may be able to accommodate with maybe a less of a drive aisle or are we looking to, to ask for maybe another waiver or something like that for the affordable housing component?
We'd have to look at it, I think that would probably be folded into the concession for the, the parking size.
Okay. Now let's definitely take a look at that. And then just while I'm on here, on, I think this level and I think all the parking levels this level and I think all the parking levels, um, this parking space in here, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Uh, these spaces are right at the, at the base of a ramp. And this one in particular is uh, striped as ADA, but um, there may be some visibility issues depending on the, on the, on the grade of that ramp. Where, you know, especially uh, someone that A- someone with ADA uh, nee- needs, you know, the mobility issues might be tough for them to get in and out of a parking space safely in that movement. So I'm not sure if you want to think about different way to strike this where you maybe not need a space just right at the base of a ramp. Or I, there's not a grade on this ramp, so I'm not sure exactly what we're talking here in terms of that visibility issue, but um, I would implore you to take a look at that on all the parking levels to see if uh, if that's going to be a safe movement or not.
We'd be happy to take a look, and, and as you know, that, this is, this is, you know, very conceptual level plans as we move into design uh, development and ultimately construction documents, whenever that happens, we'll get very, very granular on all these details. But we're happy to take a look at that now.
Sure, uh, just cause it might affect the layout at this stage.
Yep.
Um. And then there was a spot up here. I wasn't sure if it was a space. It had a few symbols in it. We weren't sure what those symbols were, this one up here where my cursor is right now. It looks like a parking space, but we weren't sure.
We'll look at that.
Alright. Um. Let me pan out just a second here. Okay, so I think this leads me into another one of our big ticket items, which is, you know, we, we're taking a close look at the plans and the interaction of your trash. And uh, I think it would be a very good exercise right now to think through a trash management plan and provide us with one. Um, so we're clear on how everything is going to be collected, how it's going to get deposited. Uh, we noticed there was some doorways through, I think you have a dedicated kind of a retail trash service door with an elevator. Um, that elevator goes up uh, to a second floor trash collection area. Um, which could work well or, or may not work well depending on, on how the plans kind of arranged. Um, you have retail tenants further down to the east that may think the parking lot's a very good cut through rather than uh, lugging trash all the way around to your service entrance over there. Um, looks like you have doorways and elevator doors that are a little bit smaller, so people are having to push bins that are loaded with trash, may not be able to accommodate those bins. But, and I mean, and I think it's an issue that we need to look at in both buildings per se, because uh, I mean, we're, we're not sure of vertical clearances for the parking structure. Are there going to have to be trash trucks that will need to pull into them, or will waste management, you know, treat those via a smaller vehicle and, and take the trash out? So it is a lot of kind of uh, uh, more micro issues to have to work through there. And we just would like a very clear understanding of how all those components are going to work together.
Yeah, we're happy to drill down into that and get you some, get you some responses. I will say currently the tenants on the east side, um, do have and like a walkway. Yeah, right, right, not there, um, the exit, the end, um, in the back.
Oh. I'm sorry, I'm on a parking plan.
Oh, yeah.
No, this is level one, okay, we're good.
Yeah, that, that, they can, they can exit from the ground floor out of their tenant spaces, walk down that pathway, and then they'll have access um, behind and around, but we will definitely drill down and
cursor is?
Yeah.
Okay. So they can come around this way?
So it'd be around the building and not through the parking lot?
That's how, that's how it's currently accessed, and that would be maintained. It would slightly shift, the access would slightly shift, um, behind the building, but they would still access out the rear of their buildings, come down and then go south towards the service road.
Yeah, the ability to work with your uh, your tenants over there to maybe direct them to do that. We've kind of noticed that with trash, especially carrying anything heavy, it's path of least resistance. Dedicate a path to it. If there's a shorter path, they're going to find it. We, we can see that by the trail that goes up the landscaping to the, the current trash enclosures back there. Um, so just again, it's part of the overall concept of just taking a closer look at how all that's going to be fitting together.
Yeah, well, absolutely, look at that.
Okay. Let's see. Alright, I'll go to, um. Oh, gee, this is where, you know what, we're still having some trouble with your, with your roof plan. There's a couple of these sheets that for whatever reason, like, this is what we see for A two oh seven.
Zoom in.
Is a little. Is this the updated plan that we sent you? That one should be reading correctly.
This, this one, it's, it's not, and I apologize for that.
Okay.
I didn't have time to, to transfer that file to, to the computer this morning, which I was going to do and ran out of time.
Um, I think I have the um, full size one on, on my screen. If you want me to go ahead and share screen instead, if we want to look at those sheets.
Sure, we can take, we can take a look.
Okay. I have to apologize for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye. Bye.
Can we see that?
Yeah.
So I think this is two oh seven, the one that wasn't loading quite right, and then two oh eight. This is on the full size.
Alright, so two oh seven would be essentially the fifth level, correct?
Six, six, right, ab- above the parking?
This is the roof deck on the fifth um, level residential.
There's a gym and a uh, a recreational room of some kind. Right? And then the pool, fire pits and whatnot.
Right, it's the open space amenity area for the residences.
Right, so I mean, again, uh, my comment here is, is more details better for us, um, especially how rooftop equipment's going to work. I see there's a, i- i- this mechanical space, is that enclosed?
Um, I, I would imagine it will be open to the sky but screened, and we can definitely drill down into that and add some notes to clarify.
Okay, well, it would be really good is to show that through your cross-sections as well.
Okay.
You know, you could have dimensions of the equipment on the roof plan itself, including the height, of course, would be the most important. And then the height of uh, either the parrot pit or a mansard, if you're using a mansard up there. And we should be able to see that.
Okay. I thought those were on this, our plans, but we'll, we'll double check, uh, make sure they are, and then add clarifying notes.
Okay, thank you. And uh, okay, so another question that we had was uh, uh, load in, load out for residences, um. I, I, there were some loading areas, I believe, over by building B, right? That's the building across the way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but for building A, what, what was your thinking on where residents will be loading in and out?
There will be a loading area for moving out, um, to the rear of the building off of the service road.
Okay.
And see.
Is this my cursor?
No, it would be on the other side, um. There, see that elevator there?
This one?
Yeah. It may, we may need to clarify, there it is, see the service access lobby. Um. That would be, yeah, that would be where you can move in and out. We wanted to make sure it's, you know, outside of the
Like, um, I think we were also asking about in that same vein, like uh, delivery trucks, Amazon drivers, um, things like that. Delivery trucks would be able to kind of stage here and then utilize this elevator, this access into the building.
Yeah, we can drill down into that as we develop our trash management plan and drill down into loading, pull it all into the same analysis.
Okay, and if you haven't already reached out to the post office, you may want to find out what they're okay with for their workers in terms of walking distances, parking and whatnot. I uh, I recognized there was three weeks I didn't get mail, and I figured out later it's because I was parking my car too close to the mailbox. So maybe rather particular about what the workers to do in terms of delivering. I know we saw there was a, a package room, you know, near the main lobby. Um, in, in that location, so I imagine that's where they're going to need to end up eventually. Um, but that would, it's a pretty far distance away from this service elevator, so anyway, just another thing to put on the list and follow up with.
Will do.
Uh, nowadays, we have so many like DoorDash, Instacart, all those sort of delivery drivers, so it would be nice to have kind of a designated area for where those people can come, make a quick stop, park their car, do whatever they need to do, and get back in their car without having to drive around, look for parking in the structure.
Yeah, that's a great comment, and we've incorporated that into some of our other properties, so we'll take a look at that as well.
Alright, thank you. Uh, let's see, what else? I don't have too much left, um. I know we were taking a quick look at the, um, a- and parking is going to be, as you mentioned, i- it's a big issue. Uh, we do have a parking study. Uh, we're still looking into the parking issue a little bit more in terms of the math and whatnot, um. We did notice though, in your technical memorandum, uh, you have some quotes in here from uh, some informal meetings that we had over especially the outdoor requirement for uh, the restaurants, um, and that was utilizing the one for one eighty uh, over the two hundred fifty square feet for the outdoor seating areas. Couple of points to make about that, um. It's probably better to uh, more specifically account for the outdoor areas in your math. I think right now, uh, there was a blanket statement that there is, you know, X amount of square feet of outdoor area and X amount of square feet, which is less than that. Um, is what's kind of for parking, but not an accounting of how we got to that lower number. So I think, you know, identifying uh, per establishment, you know, the establishment, how much outdoor space they have. And uh, and then showing how each qualifies for the two hundred fifty square foot exemption from that.
That should be in the appendix, but we'll take a look at it.
Okay, and again, you know, we're still in the middle of this, so it could be that we just haven't gotten to that page yet.
Absolutely.
Um, but please uh, remove references to reliance on informal uh, staff discussions. Um, the only one that does have the authority to do that would be uh, the director. And so I think we would have to make a formal interpretation about, about those areas and those reductions. Using that.
Will do.
Um, and then one last, uh, one last comment that I have really, um, from a technical nature, and that's because I'm the lead AP here, which is just a general comment that the non-residential portions of the structure need to meet equivalent of lead silver. Uh, we'll usually ask for that via a uh, a table upfront, just generally on which, which uh, credits you're going to be attempting to go after and a basic accounting of the number of points to get there, and you know, I would sheet a little bit high, shoot, shoot a few punt, points above. So if something doesn't pan out to meet a requirement, that you have some wiggle room in there, but uh, I know you're only AP and, and would be very uh, very uh, specific with that and are very knowledgeable about that too, so. Um, that uh, is just a quite requirement. We usually uh, will, will verify that on the back end, since it's through, you know, after construction, we'll, we'll do the accounting of it. Um, but just want some thought put into sustainability upfront. Um, sustainability is a very important issue for this city, and um, as you know, through some of your other centers too, it's um, i- it could be a nice fun, interactive kind of inv- uh, exercise and, and um, you can obviously save energy, save water, water's the big issue right now, obviously, um. And uh, just some, put us some good thought into it upfront. You might have already done that.
Yeah, sustainability is incred- incredibly important to us as well, so we're, we're happy to uh, put some thought into that. And we can maybe talk further about the right checklist that you like to see and that sort of thing.
Alright, sounds good, um. That's what all, that's all I had on my list. Jaclyn, was there anything else that you wanted to add?
I think one of the questions that I had was actually cleared up earlier was something you said, but about the parking. So I just want to make sure, and again, we're still in the process of reading through the um, parking information that you provided, so just to clarify, there's more commercial square footage currently than you're proposing, right? So the theater in total is more square footage than the combined retail and restaurant areas that you'll be adding?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a net reduction of about nine thousand square feet.
Okay, so there's no new commercial parking required per code, and then the residential is addressed, I think, on the first sheet of the plans. You have a calculation for that.
Yes, all the part.
No, I was just going to ask to, while we're on the subject, because uh, and I forgot to mention it earlier. It was unclear to us whether or not there are parking spaces available for commercial patrons in the, in the parking structures. Or, you know, there wasn't a, these are all residential parking spaces versus which ones are residential versus which ones were for commercial patrons, um. I- is there a, a mix of both in the parking structures, or are they only for the residents?
No, the, the, on the cover page, we break down parking by use, so all of the parking underneath the two buildings is for the residential. Um, there is a surplus of parking in both buildings, like, that far exceeds the code requirements and the demand requirements. In building B, which is the building just on the other side of Commons Way, there is a lot of extra spaces, so it's possible that some of those could be used for like employee or short-term um, parking for commercial. If, if that makes sense, you know, as we move forward, but from a code perspective and from a demand perspective, both the buildings and the surface parking are um, overparked.
Okay. Uh, but every, everything in a structure is going to be residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so our assumption is that you'll have some sort of like gate at the entrance to both structures, right, and you can only get in there if you're resident, is the plan?
Right.
Alright, like a fog controlled something or other?
Yeah, we'll have to look at what technology is available at the, you know, when we're ready to move into design. Um, that's what we have at a lot of our properties.
Okay, and I would also be cognizant of those entrances to the structures to make sure you're not going to have any queuing issues. Obviously, if you put a gate too far close to the, the main entrance without a little space to queue, then that could become an issue.
Absolutely.
It was this area that you were talking about?
Yeah, there was a little, little concern about this area, um. Uh, and some ongoing debate too about, you know, the amount of traffic that's going to come down Commons Way and need to get into that entrance at any given time, which, you know, there's not too many people that actually drive that way right now. Um, obviously, you'll be introducing some folks that will be now coming down that way, and um, you know, if they all come at the same time, maybe not the best of, best of things, but um, but anyway, a- again, it, you know, the, the, the brunt of the issue there, which is just take a look at, you know, where that control gate's going to be and, and how much space we have for queuing in there.
Yeah, so that way a car could, you know, if you make this turn, maybe the queuing is done in this area underneath the building instead of having the gate right here. That way you
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would definitely insert it, but it's a great comment, and we'll, we can drill down on that. I would, I will say, um, as you mentioned, it's, it's parking for the residences there, and there would be a maximum of eighteen units, so um, there wouldn't be a ton of cars accessing from that driveway, but we would definitely insert the the drive arm or whatever technology we're implementing.
Right, right. Okay, um, well, I think that concludes the technical portion of this. We still have some members of the public, so maybe we can stop screen share for now. And let me see. And let me see who's on attendees for now, um.
Did we want Carolyn to say anything or do we want to go to the public first?
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, Carolyn.
No, you're totally good. Um, I actually didn't have any further comments really. I thought you covered everything, Glenn, so I'm good.
I know we had a discussion earlier. I thought we touched on them all, but I, I apologize for overlooking you there.
No, no problem.
Okay, so at this point in time, uh, we'll open it up for public comment. Um, please keep your comments relatively short. And, uh, we will, we'll write down what you're telling us and, uh, uh, go from there. I have so far one hand up. Uh, Joe Choco, let me allow you to speak. You should be. There, please unmute yourself.
I just unmuted myself and it is Joe Choco and hello, Chris.
Hi, Joe.
Chris was kind enough along with Blake to, uh, walk us through quite a bit of this, so I have very few comments. Um, one is, um, yes, we understand that the residents are supposed to park underground. In the residential, uh, areas. But, you know, sometimes people are in a hurry, you know, they rush up, they just want to run in and run back out. So what's going to stop them from taking up surface parking spaces? That, that's just a consideration you might want to think about. And the only other thing is, when you were looking at, uh. Uh, the area behind Founder's Hall where there is a paved driveway currently. I've been up in that area and there appears to be a gate that. Prevents people coming from the senior center into that area, and I think I understand why. But my comment has to do with egress in the event of emergencies. So, um, how easy is it, uh, for that gate to get opened? And who would be responsible for doing that in those cases? And that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
All right, and I can briefly, uh, respond to that, Joe, that, uh, that's a city controlled fence or gate. Uh, the reason it's closed is because when it was open, a lot of delivery trucks like, like to go in a circular fashion. Up the city hall driveway and in back of the Caruso Center and then around in a big circle, so. Uh, we didn't want, uh, this to be especially with the senior center now, a, a truck delivery route. Uh, very important to us there. Um, the fire department obviously will have access to it and the city has access to it. Um, Chris, I don't know, do, do, do we ever give you guys access? You guys probably have to have a key too, right?
You know, I don't know if we have a key. I know the fire department has a key, um, but I think as we move forward in the process and continue discussions with the city. About some of the things we talked about earlier, you know, we'll talk through some of these related issues.
Okay. Uh, Joe, thank you. Was that the end of your comment?
Yeah, y- yes, it is, and I understand completely, uh, your point, uh, Glenn. And with the park apartments, we definitely don't want trucks going up that area. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. So I will. Lower your hand, um. I see a few others in there, uh, please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment, uh, at this time. Seeing none. I want to thank everyone for attending. Thank you for, uh, participating today. We always look forward to speaking with you guys and look forward to working with you on, on the rest of these issues. We will, uh, be trying to get that comment letter out. I, I believe about mid, middle of next week. Um, and then, uh, when you get that and digest it, then we can circle back around and try to resolve all these issues.
Sounds great and, and thank you very much. Again, we're really excited to have submitted our plan. We look forward to continuing the process. And again, if anyone in the community is listening and you would like to meet with us, we would, we would be happy to do so. Uh, we're always listening. Uh, this is just the beginning, so we're always available.
And, and we'll get your, uh, your website up on our, on the project page, so the public will have access. To all of that information as well. So thank you for providing that to us.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I think the meeting will be concluded. So thank you again and, uh, we'll all be in touch soon.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Bye bye.